Good afternoon. I'm now going to call a Wednesday, July 19th, 2023 meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to Auto. On Wednesday, March 29th, 2023, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act making appropriations for fiscal year 2023, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public parties to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. That action was effective immediately, and it extends the current option for remote meetings through March 31st, 2025. Thank you. I'm going to ask everyone to join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the sincere republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call a roll. Commissioner Stady?
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Shea is present. We have a quorum. Thank you very much. We don't have an executive session today. I'm going to take a couple of housekeeping matters, and then I believe the town in Needham is en route from Dedham Town Hall. We'll do one opera award, and then we'll go right to our appointment with Register O'Donnell. I don't want to have the town in Needham have to wait while we complete our agenda. Okay, number four minutes, the open session meeting of July 20th, July 10th, 2023 for approval. Motion.
Uh, second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is motion, it is a vote. Motion to minutes of, minutes to accept the minutes of the open session meeting of July 12th, 2023 for approval, motion.
Give me one second if I could. July 12th, Mr. Chairman?
It's in there.
Oh, yeah. That's right. I got that. Yeah. One second. Yep. All set.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll skip number six for a minute. We'll go to number seven, public comment. Each week we have a session or a meeting for public comment. Director Coron, do you have anyone notify you for public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Anyone out there in Zoom land? I usually see who's there. Is there a reason? Is it different today?
I guess there wasn't right here.
As long as it's on, it doesn't matter. Okay.
Can't see anything.
No public comment. All business, I have none. That's eight. Number nine, personnel matters. For consideration, we have two.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
Probably a little disappointed for this, but notice the resignation of Mary Ann Casano, Walpole, Mass. As our human resource specialist at the rate stated, it's effective 7/21/23.
Second.
Sorry to see her leave. She's done a great job.
Correct. She's done a great job. Is she, did, did Mary, was Mary Ann here or here?
Not quite.
Not quite here. Okay. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Second item in the Treasurer's office.
Mr. Chairman, if I will, Treasurer's office, another resignation of Carolyn Sarah, of Reedville, Mass., as temporary junior accountant at the restated effective 7/12/23. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number 10, payroll and expense warrants for approval.
Chairman, if you want, I'll read the, move forward the warrant list of 7/19. Number one, the payroll of the county, 24-2, move approval of $188,736.66. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Second, the expense of the county for 7/3/24, the amount of $495,190.30. So moved.
Second. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
There is the expense of the Aggie School, 24-01, a move the amount $79,506.20. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. And we have three opera awards. First one I know pretty good, the town of Canton, 24-02, is move the amount of $85,000 for Canton. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Second one is the opera award for Medfield, 24-02, the amount of $9,286.78. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Next.
Big one is going to the town in Needham this week, 24-02, the amount of $2,142,500 for this water supply. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Uh, that concludes the warrant, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is that Bill Buckley? Are you, you all, are you there, please?
I just saw him come in. I think.
They're coming right in.
Okay. Okay. Have them come right in. We're going to do, they can't, the Needham Award. Okay. When they come in, we're going to do item number 11, which is 11 and 12 are connected. So we'll do a 12. And we'll do the Needham Award, and then we'll go right to Register O'Donnell.
Do you want a brief update on the?
Sure. Just down on the other two.
Sure. So you just approved three opera awards this week. As Commissioner Stady indicated, the first was for the town of Medfield, $9,286.78. This is their latest. They've been very active. They'll be used to equip the town hall and public safety buildings with hybrid meeting equipment. This building hosts a number of public board meetings and many hearings, including their select one for the town of Medfield. Town of Canton, as Commissioner Stady indicated, $85,000 flat is to purchase 32 defibrillators to replace the town's current decades-old stock and expand life-saving defibrillator, easy for me to say, defibrillator access across the town. Their current defibrillators are approaching 10 years old and are beginning to fail. These will be placed at new sites, including the town to back up defibrillators to be placed in service when others fail or require maintenance. That is Canton's latest award again, another community that's been very active with us. The final one, relative to the town of Needham. This one came before us.
Hello.
Kate, it's Patrick. Um, some time ago, we had a conversation with Needham about this advance. This is a large-scale project. I'll yield to town manager Kate Fitzpatrick to explain, but we're happy to bring this forward to the commissioners today for your favorable vote. So that is our position on our today.
Sure. Good afternoon, ladies. We heard you were roaming around Dedham, so it's good to see you. And we're going to give you a check before you leave, but any comments on this opera award?
Sure. I'm Kate Fitzpatrick, town manager. This is Katie King, Assistant Town Manager.
Aye.
This is a stormwater project. Our town reservoir used to actually be the public water supply. It's right there on Dedham, right off Dedham Avenue at our Public Works Building, which I'm sure you've been by many times. And this is a, it's a category five impaired water body, so we will be removing sediment either by chemical means or by dredging, depending on what the final design is of the project. And there are many different best management practices related to our NITDs permit in the areas around it. It's surrounded by a golf course and a bunch of fields. So we're starting, one of them as early as this week would be to change a pipe that's discharging into that reservoir. So this is going to be really positive impact on the water quality in that body. Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioners, any comments?
Just a couple of quick ones. Is any of the money being appropriated towards this project and the town as well, or is this?
The town funded the design.
I see. Yep. And the second thing is Needham MWRA? Or is this a separate body of water you utilize?
So Needham is a partial sourced water from MWRA. Our well field is actually on the Dover Line. This used to be a surface water that I think it's been decommissioned since the, since the 30s. It's been a very long time ago.
Okay. That's great. Well, it's great. Great project. I read the application. It's a good project. Right up the Opera's Alley. There it is. That's good.
Okay.
Congratulations.
I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask Commissioner Stady's question this week. Where does this amount put us in?
We are well over $82 million off the door out of our 135,000, planning suspension.
Okay, so.
Well over 60%.
Way up.
That's good. I never would have thought it would go this well.
Number one county.
Okay.
We have the big check out front if you want to take a recess, take some pictures.
Okay. Bill, can you? We're going to take a one-minute picture. Give the town a check. All the motions go into one-minute recess.
All right. We'll recess at 1:15.
All in favor? All right. Be right there. Okay.
Sure. What are you guys thinking about? Oh, well, what's on the schedule? I'd say that. Let's.
Make it more under the agenda.
Oh, it says registry of deeds prior loss.
Do you have a summer session there?
Oh, no, we don't have summer session. We have Ag Explorations, as it's called. We have something here.
Okay.
But it's for littler kids. It's not for high schoolers. It's for not even about to be high schoolers. It's little kids. Yeah, it's nice. Nice change of pace to see a little kid on campus. And we have maybe a dozen teachers that do it as a way to, you know, get paid for your own fees to supplement their pay. It's good. It's more of community, it's as much community outreach because it's well, you know, subscribed. It's, it's not super expensive relative to other things you can do with your kids.
The camps are expensive.
Yeah. You can do it all day. Or you can do just half a day, and it's only for two weeks.
Wow. Oh, good.
But some things like horses and stuff like that are very heavily subscribed, and they sell out right away.
Okay.
You know, people who want to go horse camp and I've been some years in a row.
Actually, over the years, I know a few kids that have gone.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Nice and healthy. It's about to end. This is week two of two weeks. So we have a few more days, and then we'll have a three-week break, four-week break, because we start before Labor Day. Yeah, we always start the week before for a short week, three days, three days for kids.
And then you come back.
Four days for parents. I mean, four days for staff, three days for kids, and then maybe come back after. So the first two weeks of school are not four weeks. It's a three-day week, and then a 40-week. How are things with you guys?
Good, good. The same here.
Yeah.
That's good. I think you dropped your phone.
Oh, thanks. Yeah. Mr. Shea. You, um, I saw Richard at the funeral at Mark Parrish's. I saw Richard at Mark Parrish's.
Needham.
Beautifully.
The town in Needham.
We've got to mention, you know, this, that's one of the first challenges that we're bringing in.
I know. I know. I didn't see you. If I want to talk to you after this, I need to talk to you.
That was good, though.
Okay, we're back on the record on our Wednesday, July 19th, 2023 meeting, and Norfolk County Commission is going to go to item number six, appointment with Registered Deeds William O'Donnell. Status of Registry Deeds by a law. Good afternoon, Register. Good afternoon, Maggery.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
Thank God, I'm dry clean. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Register. You have the floor.
Okay. Well, first of all, I appreciate being over here. My whole thing has been, there definitely has to be more communication, more transparency, and just, just better relations. This fire took place February 6th, 2021. I know all of you got a call about the fire while it was happening. And my issue, you know, I just think, you know, there should be communication. I just feel like sometimes the registry gets singled out. And, you know, I've made a number of requests to just meet and talk about what's going on with the fire and with the fire insurance and with what's going on. I delivered a letter here May 31st. I don't know if you, if you need copies of that letter. I can give them to you, or at least make them, just make it part of the record. This was the letter that I had asked, and and some of it, as you could tell, was born out of frustration because I wrote a letter asking for an update on, on March 25th, 2022. There was another request November 22nd, 22, the two-year anniversary, February 26th, 23. You know, just saying, look, you know, we, you know, I'd just like to have some questions answered. And finally, on the 31st, May 31st, when I was here, if you remember that, meeting about the $4,500, I delivered a request saying we should meet on it. I had hoped to meet on June 7th. We're meeting here today, and I'd just like to, you know, get some answers. All these questions were in virtually every one of the letters that I wrote dating back to March 25th, 2022. So maybe through the chair. Did, did any, when, when were the commissioners notified that the money, that monies have been received on this February 6th, 2021 fire?
That money had been received?
Yeah, each of the commissioners.
I don't believe money has been received. Maybe I'm.
No, the county has received approximately $219,000 to date.
Oh, okay.
The money was deposited into the general fund.
And the date of that was, I've got a, I try to have a calendar here. What's the date of that, John?
They received over a series of dates from FY '21 into FY '23. Get to the dates and let it die.
Okay.
Did we get the money in '22 or '23? Both. Did we?
That's my answer.
No, I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your frankness. Through you, I mean, to the other, other two commissioners, were you aware that the money was received?
I noticed the money was received, yeah.
Oh, you did? You knew?
I, I might have missed it, to tell you the truth. I might have. You know, that's if John had brought to our attention, I'm not really sure. I probably did, but.
And, and again, I want to move things forward with the registry. I feel like we get singled out. I feel like we don't get allowed to operate the registry as we should. And one of the things, and I guess it begs the question, I appreciate what Chairman Shea asked about the amount. Chairman, I mean, Chairman Collins, Peter, Commissioner Collins, are you aware through the chair?
Go ahead.
Are you aware of the amounts?
He didn't struggle with the amount. I didn't know the amount.
And what was the amount again, John?
$219,000.
And do you know when, through the chair to Director Cronin, when the last check was received?
Earlier calendar year '23.
Do you know the date?
Not off the top of my head, sir.
Well, you know, because we were at meeting, I do. I checked with the insurance company, and this is what troubles me. The county has received $219,490.65 as of May 22nd, 2023, of which $149,786.32 was issued in March of 2023 that the county, county director received. And the troubling part for me is, you know, I can't speak to all the amounts and all my questions. Every letter I wrote, March 25th, 2022, November 22nd, 2022, February 26th, 2023, and even May 31st, 2023, just asked for the courtesy of, did you receive, you know, what's going on with the claim? Did you receive a check, you know, you know, of what's going on? And why would the registry be interested? Because part of the claim, or most of the claim, are for losses that the registry bought and paid for. They bought and paid for items that were damaged. And the insurance company, to quote them, the $149,786.32 was received in March of 2023 by Norfolk County for registry paper toner, paper toner and other items lost in the vault. You know, just let the registry know. This money was never accounted for to the registry, yet to, to me, we're getting, you know, not to bring up other votes, but I have to. We're getting denied. We had approved monies for $4,500 in March. That came up May 31st, $4,500 in approved budget to do a statutory duty involving microfilm. We don't get to spend it. On April 26th, and again on May 4th, we had meetings here. And I know you think I ginned up the union, Mr. Chair, but I didn't. The, the union people came over because positions got cut, and there were promotions that were available in the fiscal '23 budget that weren't given, and there were cuts made in the fiscal '24. Why do I tie this in? Because when we talk about transparency, I sat at those meetings and was told there was no money available. I was unsuccessful in trying to show how deeds excise that we collect could be used. And as a matter of fact, here's a chart. Through June 30th, the registry portion of deeds excise from July 1st to June 30th is 1.7 million. We could have used that to, to, to reinstate the cut union positions, as well as, if you remember, there were some temporary people. We have Rich Kennedy, 40 years of a member. Gary Lubin, 40 years. Rich Sarani, a number of years here at the, at the county. 40 years of service. That's a great institutional memory. Now, there have been edicts that people have to use up their time. We use these people. We use their institutional knowledge. When people have to take vacation time, we use it. And the registry was the only department that was singled out, that it was zero monies in the temporary budget. And what bothers me that at least out of the 200, almost 220,000, but we, we know of, 150,000 of that was for items destroyed in the registry. You got money. We come over here in April and May, and Director Cronin sits there and says, oh, there's no way to come up with money. We could have used the deeds excise. We could have used an increase in the county mandate, but more importantly, what about this money? This money could have been used. And the fact that, you know, I have to make four requests. You know, I, I just, I don't think that's transparency. And, and you know, we're using temp money in other areas of the county, whether it's at the golf course or other county departments, yet the registry has always used temp money. And, and again, to me, it's the registry getting singled out. Now, you might be saying, why is he single? Listen, I want to move things forward, but I don't feel, I feel like the registry gets singled out. And I want to ask a question. Why couldn't the proceeds that were bought and paid for by the registry have been used to either fund those union positions or fund the temporary monies, or again, use it, you know, you've got an advisory board meeting coming up in September? Reinstate those positions or the temp monies? Why couldn't the money be, be used? And it's just disappointing that Norfolk County had the check. County director knew about the check. And, you know, bring it up for discussion. If you don't want to do it, that's another story, but it was never brought up as an option, no matter how many times we asked for it. So that, that, that's my issue with, with respect to the fire.
Well, let me. We're still not settled this finally, right?
No.
So it's in, in, it's, it's before us. It's, it's an insurance claim, and it's taken a long time. I think I think, I don't know if the, the claim of 2015 from those stones, I think that almost took as long as this took. It is not in the insurance business, but I basically have an understanding. I know that we've talked to the carrier. I know we've talked to the people. I know they switched adjusters or whatever they call them, but I don't know that we'd be and I didn't know you were coming in. Well, it doesn't matter what you're coming for. I don't know that we'd be switching insurance funds to pay salaries, et cetera. I don't, I think we're getting we're getting the car to head of the bus here. When is this? Aren't we on a mandate of August? This is going to be settled by?
A second.
First week in August, huh?
A second.
Well, it's coming pretty damn quick. Yeah. I mean.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, on the follow-up.
Go ahead.
We're probably on the same page. I don't know. My question's for you or Mr. Cronin. Is it legal to take money from insurance proceeds that went for safe supplies or microfilm and then use that money to fund a position as Register O'Donnell is maybe saying?
I don't know. That's a very good question. That's why I don't know.
So I don't know if we can do that. Secondly, you know, you got a little field. The chairman gave you some latitude. Our discussion here is about the fire. I want, I want to get into this. I was troubled by the fact that the fire took place 2/6/22. I remember I went. I was there. The next day, John McGowan and the crew were out there cleaning it up. The next thing I see is 2/9. Oh, no, is it, was it a year later? It takes a year before anything happened. So what happened? Why was, why did it take a year to get something going on this? I mean, that's, I, that's a question for me to ask who, what was going on for a year? Why did it take, give me, it take a year to get a claim submitted or a year to get papers documented? I mean, that's the thing that jumps at me is why did it come out to that? The estimate comes out to 378. That's fine. We got part of that money, as you said.
I think, though. What's the, we don't have any, what's the estimate?
It said here, estimated.
370. Okay, because this is why we should have meetings. 370. Good. Thank you.
It's 378 roughly. It's some change. Now, I do recall, though, and we did say to you, I'm going to give you a little latitude. Chair will allow it.
Go ahead.
You had tried to make a position for some of those people like Rich Kennedy and others who we have great respect for. We had said the time for that might be in the fall. There might be some money that we can let the dust settle and sort it through. So that's not like a closed case, at least on my mind it isn't. And maybe we're waiting for all these things to be wrapped up. Okay. But I think the, the main goal for us, I'd love to see us just, what, what happened procedure-wise? What did we learn from this? And how can we improve? Because there was something about, I caught, I read through the file. John did reach out to me and asked, I had a couple of questions, but I took the time to read through it and went through a lot of paperwork, a lot of documents, a lot of emails, a lot of messages. It's wild. But the thing is, this appraiser, this fellow here was, you know, whoever was doing it, seemed to be the fourth one, the fourth person. So maybe we need to examine, you know, who we're doing business with. That's just a thought. I mean, it's just, we're not getting that level of service. That's my thought. That's all, you know? You're a homeowner, and you got a fire, right?
And then they want to drop you.
Right. You want, that's right. Oh, they do.
I mean, let's be honest here.
I've been there. I'll be with my parents also.
I know, I know.
But you want that check right away. You don't want someone dragging it out, dragging it out. So we should hold it the same standard. That's all. That's, I'm looking at that in terms of not just you, but us as a county. Why did we get, kind of take the drag it out? And I'm not pointing the finger. I'm just trying to figure what, what, how can we do better?
Okay.
How can we do better?
I'm going to go to you.
Go ahead, Register. I was going to say, you know, to what Chairman Shea said and to you, I, having dealt with insurance companies, know that they're, that they're not the easiest process to deal with. My issue is just a simple question of asking, have you received any monies? And to not be told of that, I, I just, I just don't think, I mean, we've had disagreements on things, but I, I, you know, whether it's, you know, you always rise above them and you give the information and all that. To your point, and this is one of my concerns, and I know, you know, and I just want to put this out there. One of the reasons that registry, that registry of deeds dedicated deeds excise fund, which has been a subject of different votes and different things, there was money in there. And one of the reasons that that money accrued over the years, whether it was under Barry Hannan or Paul Harold or myself, was because of the potential of a disaster, whether it's a fire or some type of business continuity interruption plan. I said all along, there should be money, that money in, in the registry's eyes is, 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 has been developed through registry deeds excise money that from a management standpoint, not a mismanagement standpoint, but the five Ps, proper preparation prevents poor performance, having the monies set aside in that registry account, had monies available if something bad happened. And some people poked fun at that, but one of the reasons I, I thought it was good to accumulate that money was more than not violating the five Ps. But because of what Chairman Shea said and what you just said, Commissioner Stady, insurance companies aren't the easiest to deal with. If we had, if that building, God forbid, burnt down, we got to get up and running right away. And, and that's why that $4.2 million that was in that fund is, is where I'm at. Because that was resources that could be used, and we, we have estimates that it actually could cost more to get up and running, you know, if, if that building was completely taken out by fire. And you can, and it has been. Some county officials poo-pooed it as, oh, there's, there's no such thing, there's not going to be a fire, or there's insurance. Insurance does not get you up and running. So to your point, that was why that registry deeds excise fund was important to the registry.
And to just pull you in a little bit, I did sit in your letter. I read that in your letter. You gave us letters on that to that effect. So I mean, you're overstating your case. I understand that. That's, you know, and there's some merit. Maybe perhaps it should be an account set up separate than deeds. I mean, we got the law. We're being told the treasurer, though, has the obligation, not us, the treasurer, has the obligation to take money. And we talked about this last meeting, didn't we, a couple of minutes ago, that it's the treasurer's role to take extra money and set it aside or whatever. So I, I, listen, I'm all about putting things away for a rainy day. We all do that. Again, as a homeowner, as a town, as a county, it does make sense. You know, so if something catastrophic would happen, you're right. Our, our services don't get interrupted. That's, that's a good point. That's a good point. But again, we have to follow the law, too. That's part of the problem. We're trying to litigate and figure out, you know, and that's That's part of the problem that we're trying to litigate and figure out, you know, and that's, that's one of the key questions, you know? Again, going back to this, in terms of just trying to figure out how can we do better? Maybe again, maybe, maybe, you know, giving you updates or something like that, I don't know. Maybe, maybe because it wasn't resolved, maybe we were looking to resolve it, trying to get up there. I mean, I see a series of emails from our office, there's a, there's a whole bunch of emails in here from John Cronin and others. And there's a letter from Marguerite, I did see one of those, right? And then answer to Marguerite emails and so on. So communication got better, maybe, again, it's just, it's a moving target, as our chairman always says. We haven't got all the money yet, right? We still haven't got it all.
No, sorry.
So, you know, not yet, right?
Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Chairman. To counter what the Register proposed as his understanding of the communication in this matter, I will agree that between the event on February sixth, two thousand and twenty-one and midway through two thousand and twenty-two, there was little or no traction between the claim in the county relative to settlements. We went through three different adjusters during that time period. And just the county commissioners understand the communication on a loss is usually directly between the adjuster and the department contact. They're the ones who share information relative to the loss. Our office helps collaborate and coordinate and make sure those pieces are connected. But during this period, as the adjusters fell off, we were dissatisfied when we found out that there was inadequate connection to the department. In late two thousand and twenty-two, this information came to a head as a result of the November twenty-second, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two letter from the Register. It was followed up with an email from me telling him I'd had a meeting with the adjuster, the insurance, insurance company to elevate their activities associated with this claim. They assigned their fourth adjuster. And since then, you can see a series of emails and actions that have resulted in the culmination of where we are today, which is the final piece of information that was requested from the registry was shared this week. During this timeframe, commissioners, in your packet, you have approximately seventy-nine pages of relevant material. This is a fraction, a fraction of the communication between the Registry of Deeds, the insurance company in this office. There was widespread communication. So I take a lot of issue with the Register's communication that there was any, any suggestion that there was a lack of communication. I'm curious as to know why the Register wants to know when the county received funds. What is the purpose of understanding when we receive funds associated with the claim? I'd like to know from the Register, was there some form of the claim that the receipt of these funds would have provided him some benefit of? He was made whole almost immediately after the fire in June of two thousand and twenty-one through a supplemental fund that paid for the shelving that was destroyed during that fire. Subsequent to that, we see evidence in his spending in FY twenty-one and twenty-two where he elevated through his own appropriation costs for paper, toner and other expenses, which were the major portions of his loss. The other elements, as I put in your packet, that were associated with the vault door repair, the ring wiring of the room by Gone Green, excuse me, as well as fire alarm services were all paid for by the claim and we reimbursed ourselves for those costs. Incidentally, Chairwoman Childs, who I believe was on the Finance Committee in two thousand and twenty-one, made an announcement in according to the meeting minutes that any such claim monies that come in should go back to the county budget. And that's exactly what we've done. So we've been following the path of receiving the funds and using them, obviously in FY twenty-three to help balance our budget. And I'm sure the Register, who keenly watches our meetings every week and records them, knows that we went through a period of time as we closed FY twenty-three where having sufficient revenues to close was in jeopardy. We went through a spending freeze, which we're still in. These funds helped bolster our, our balance sheet in FY twenty-three. So that's where they went effectively. But they remain in the county's possession, our general fund, for any potential appropriation associated with this loss. We've not heard anything further from the Register relative to the need for additional funding to backfill expenses associated with these items that he's pointed out today. So beyond the shelving in two thousand and twenty-one, we haven't heard from the Register about his needs. So while he's keenly interested in knowing when we received our settlement, I'm curious as to know why he would like to know that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Mr. Chairman, even coming over here trying to be cooperative and try to run this place the way it should be, it's an attack because the county director likes his narratives. I could ask questions from those letters, read those letters. I just ask simple things, what's the status of the, the claim? When were the checks received? No, I want to know why the check was received is because we might have made, made other requests. It came from our budget. To me, this is the equivalent, if a homeowners association got a check for a fire, but it really was because there was damage to the unit owners inside the walls of the condo, it's not right for the homeowners association to keep the check, it goes to the unit owner. There was a loss and only coming over here trying to be cooperative do I get attacked? And I, I want to say, how come county director Cronin gets a check and can't have the courtesy to say, because it was asked about four times, is the check got received? To me, that's not transparency. And to me, look at, between deeds excise, I thought those, those union positions and the temporary monies, and I, I hope it gets revisited in September, let's, let's have, let's schedule a meeting before, not the day of the advisory board vote and do it. Because there was deeds excise money. The registry collected one point seven million, the county got four point six million of its share. Totally, we collected over forty million. So the, the issue of why I'm asking is, it just seemed inherently not transparent to have county director Cronin sit here at a meeting on April twenty-sixth and May fourth with employees here. It involved Rich Kennedy, Gary Lubin, Rich Sarani, and say, oh, there's no way to come up with the money. I'm looking to have discussions, to your point, questions have to get answered. But typically, if that is money that's due the registry because there were damages to the registry, then it sounds like out of fairness, the registry should get to use that. My point is, that's down, that's down line, my point, my.
Commissioner, go ahead.
I think though, we're missing some of the point here. If you were denied certain things, like I thought I saw that there was money put aside or reimbursed for your shelving. You did get shelving, am I right? As far as the incident with the fire.
But that hundred.
And then there was, there was, let me finish for a second, Billy. Then there was a, a statement about a loss of paper and a loss of toner supplies. And then I caught something where the adjuster says, don't put in the new stuff now, I only want, I don't want that, which makes sense. You can't put in for new, I just need to know what you lost.
Right.
That's what a claim is. Because of the fire, we burnt up, say, ten reams of paper, I'm making that up. So you're entitled to get reimbursed for ten reams of paper. So if you're saying to me, as a commissioner or us, as a group, that you couldn't get those supplies because you didn't know you had the money, then that's probably not right, okay? But if you were able to get the supplies, it's really six to one, half for another, that's all. Because truthfully, general accounting, I think truthfully, the check goes to the county. It does go to the county. Now, maybe you were told, I'm not told, I think, I think it goes, it doesn't go to you.
It goes to the county, I agree with that, but in past, but who, who paid for those lost items? And when you, and when you mentioned, when you mentioned the shelving.
Right.
And I'd have to check the vote, but didn't that shelving come out of deeds excise money? Yeah, you don't have it.
Likely.
We, we, yeah, likely, so, yeah. We were like the homeowner. We took our money and started painting the walls that got burned, say. In this case, we spent our own money, the registry money, to get, to get the shelving. We're missing, the, the point to me is, you know, we, we could point, those letters and, and, and again, March twenty-seventh, twenty-fifth, twenty-two, there were four letters, including the anniversary, two years, February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Just let the registry know what's going on. And we did provide information. That information was provided within a month of, of, of there. So only do you get over here and get attacked by the, the county director, he's been.
No, it's technically, I think, I think the point where.
We should be on the same page trying to get money for the county.
That's right.
And, and monies did come in, I'm happy that monies came in. I am disappointed that despite making all these requests in every letter, did the county receive monies? I mean, are, are you that much of a control freak? You can't articulate and let someone know that.
You made remarks in these meetings that are below your office, right?
Because I'm.
Very unbecoming.
All right, all right, unbecoming of a county director too.
Thank you, sir.
This is the third county director that you chewed up, I've sat through. So come on, if there is a patent here also on your side, go ahead, come on, Director Cronin.
Having not heard an adequate response on why he was interested in the receipt of the funds, I will just point out to Commissioner Stady's question, receipt of these funds should not be used to pay for recurring expenses. It's a one-time cost, it comes in, it should be used for one-time expenses. So with respect to positions and other tangential points brought up this afternoon, it would not be appropriate to use them for those.
So I wasn't looking at that, that wasn't.
Somebody else brought that up this afternoon. So furthermore, I just want to reiterate, please read your packet, it contains all the communication relative to the claim and the progress made, certainly since last August, September, when this matter really became a focus of inaction that we acted upon. I agree with Register O'Donnell and I put this in an email to him and First Assistant Margaret Lee, that the, that the county's cooperation, if you will, from the insurance adjuster was inadequate. To your point, I just wanted also alert you, we've moved on from that particular coverage, insurance agent, we have anyone for FY twenty-four. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's good. Can we get a copy of that? I see you got it, can you get, can you give that over to us right now?
Me talking about.
This, this package that everyone's looking at.
Absolutely, it's public document, whatever you like, you're all of it.
Thank you.
That is not your public document, we'll make sure you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I have a couple of questions.
All right. Commissioner Collins.
All right, thanks. So, so I know the shelvings, the shelving was damaged, paper and toner. And so the shelving was addressed, that's not a problem, I'm not worried about that right now.
But, well, when you say addressed, hopefully you got money for it. When, when, when John mentioned that we got shelving, that was the, the registry putting up money to replace the shelving. That's separate from the insurance check.
But, but the shelving's been replaced?
By the registry, sure.
All right, and the paper and the toner have been replaced?
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Whatever you need.
You know, again, the, the, my issue is, you know, just finding out what the claim was and what the county has gotten back. Because, as you say, if we're replacing the things with our own money, you know, again, based on insurance, if, if we paid for items and we paid for the items that got damaged, then we repaid for the items to, to, to keep things going business-wise because we had to. I'm not, you know, we're just saying that the registry should have a claim to, to some of that monies. That's down the line, that could be done at, at, that shouldn't be, that, that should be something that gets taken together if there was cooperation and if there was communication. You know, so not, not at a commissioners' meeting, you know, just, all of us sit, sit around with county director Cronin and go through it. But you're right, the shelving was paid for by the registry. I don't know if you've gotten compensated or not. All I got from the insurance company was there was a check for almost a hundred and fifty thousand, that hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. And he just said it was for registry paper, toner and other items lost in the vault. You know, a, a, again, I, I don't know what, what the details were.
So, I just want to touch on each, each part of it. So the shelving went through the advisory board and it was appropriated through the advisory board. And so that was taken care of, but the paper and toner you paid out of your own budget?
I believe the shelving was paid out of the registry budget, through the advisory.
Through the advisory. So the paper and toner was, didn't go through the advisory board and you paid for it? And did you send a request to the county director for reimbursement for the paper and the toner?
I've sent four letters and it's gone between the county director and yourself. All of you have gotten those four letters, just asking what's going, going on. So I, I recognize dealing with.
No, no, sorry, I'm missing, so, did you say, hey, we paid this much for the paper, this much for the toner, please reimburse us from the insurance?
There, as, as county director Cronin has said, there's been countless information that has gone from the registry over here to the adjuster as far as items lost.
Okay.
Including, you know, lost microfilm.
Okay, okay, so, all right, so we'll talk about that later. But the paper and the toner, have you received a request from the Registry of Deeds asking for a certain amount of money for the paper and a certain amount of money for the toner?
No.
Yes, yes, you have.
Please tell me when.
One month after the fire and Commissioner Stady will attest to the fact that I was there all weekend documenting the fire, actually taking pictures of each paper carton in there. Within one month of the fire, I provided an Excel sheet with the contract numbers that we had ordered them from and the amounts.
Was that submitted to Mr. Nancy or somebody?
This office, you know, I, I don't think.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
Ms. Lee's referring to a letter sent to former county director McMullin relative to a thorough claim that the registry had done on the contents of the vault. That information was forwarded to the insurance agency. I am not in possession, to answer your question, Commissioner Collins, of any request from the Register to fund any portion of a loss from non-insurance claim funds other than the one I mentioned earlier for shelving. That's all I have.
Okay, so you have, so you have, so the shelving we take, we partially take, here, we've talked about that. And the paper and the toner, if you send a bill up to the county director, maybe we can just take care of that. All right, so that's the next part, but then you talked about microfilm.
It's ongoing, it's part of the claim process and it's ongoing. But again, you seem, Commissioner Collins, to be putting it on, on us to do something, I appreciate, well, if you want us to make a request, that's why I wrote four letters dating back to March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. It seemed to me there should have been communication, sit in a room, what's, what's the status of the claim? How much money has the insurance company, what is being asked for? How much money has the insurance company given to the county? And then talk, I, I'm, I'm not in a position, I'm not going to nickel and dime people to, to reimburse, but I'll tell you what, we, we needed to get up and running, so we go put shelving. We need paper. Speaking of paper, you know that, that we were told to cut cottons of paper, we're a multimillion dollar organization at the end of the fiscal year. So, so again, you know, we're running the registry and I got to say, it's been challenging running the registry. We have challenges thrown at us, but we're up and trying to run and, and that's what I'm getting at. Why couldn't we have been told that monies were received or what the status was and then sit, sit down and, and, and just go through this like any other, other, how many directors I've dealt with, Mr. Chair, things get discussed.
Okay, let's, let's get back to the, the microfilm. So tell me more about it. So my understanding is there's redundancy in the records, right? So you take the microfilm and someone's at the registry, someone's elsewhere?
You know, the claim's been submitted. I, I know on March thirty-first, as much as I tried to, you know, get the forty-five hundred dollar approval from you, which lasted two to one, I answered it like five times, so the microfilm, the claims have been put in, keep working with the insurance company. My intention coming over here was not to be attacked. My intention was to find out, and I think it's a legitimate question in the interest of transparency, why we weren't even told that a check came in and was any of the, the, and the, the damages for this fire were registry incurred costs? I, I, I think we had a right to know, I think we, in the interest of transparency, so.
No, no, I get, I get that, because you, you kind of covered that. So, but the, the microfilm, explain that to me more. So there's microfilm in the vault and that got burned, yes?
Right. And one of the confusions was the, whether the confusion was from this office to the adjuster or as Commissioner, Director Cronin says, the, the, dealing with the adjusters, at one point they thought it was the cleaning of microfilm, it was never about cleaning. The, the fire, I mean, Commissioner Stady came, it destroyed things, so.
Okay, all right, so, but just, so just so I can better understand, right? So there's, you have microfilm in the vault of the registry, is microfilm offsite?
Right.
Okay, all right. And you also have the books and you have computer part of that's offsite, right? So, so you get a lot of redundancy to, to keep the record safe, right?
I, I tried to explain that on May thirty-first when you voted against the forty-five hundred dollars, but yes.
All right, so, and how much, how much are you looking for, for the microfilm right now?
A, a claim that's been submitted, you know, I'm, you know.
Okay, so.
You know, you, you have to get estimates and things.
No, because the numbers changed, so I saw, I saw that there was something that two hundred and forty-four thousand was an estimate for microfilm?
What, what, what are you, what are you looking at, is that?
That's what I originally submitted.
Yeah, okay. But, but, but then when you get the actual price, it was like one fifty-one, something like that?
Let me explain.
Okay.
Immediately after the fire, I sat with the CIO, that was Jim Limby. We spent hours trying to determine the amount of images on over a hundred years of microfilm. We came up with an equation, at best, we looked at the state contract, looked at the cost per image. Since that time, we. Since that time, we I if Jim has left, I'm had to have a go, you know, kind of a workaround with our own IT department. I've been working with New England Archive, who has looked over every image. And he has come up with a price, and I think Director Cronin has included that, perhaps in the claim. It's it's like a hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, so I I yeah, okay. All right, so I get that. So and the microfilm hasn't been replaced yet?
No.
Okay, all right. So this is where I have bigger issues and you're asking about different letters. These are letters from you. On June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, you wrote to the Honorable William Galvin, Secretary of State, and you asked for a large amount of money from the county registers technological fund consultation. And the total amount that you're asking for was five hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars, of which two hundred and forty four thousand dollars was a request to replace fire damage microfilm. The same letter went out to Sean Hughes the same day. And then another letter went out to Michael Hurley, Clerk of the Senate, on August thirty first, twenty twenty one. So you requested this money to replace the microfilm back in twenty twenty one shortly after the fire. And in fact, money did come in from the registry tech fund for the exact amount of money that you wanted, five hundred and twenty nine thousand on nine twenty one twenty one, of which is the two hundred and forty four thousand dollars for the microfilm. So the problem that I'm having with this, okay, so the toner, paper, it's okay. But if you're asking for the microfilm reimbursement and you can't make you can't redo the microfilm because you don't have the money, that's not true. No, no, no.
Let me finish. No, you you like to spend things, Peter. I never said that.
Let me finish.
Never said that. Bottom line is, it was a fire insurance claim and out of courtesy, we have been shut out of the the claims. You got the four letters. I asked when you were getting the money.
I asked it, it should be declared out of order, please. Okay, all right, thank you. Let me finish. So my my question is, I'm looking at this. You received two hundred and forty four thousand dollars from the state. The actual loss was one fifty something, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But you have you've had this money. So the money that you're asking us about for this for this microfilm, you've had it almost two years.
You come up.
He's still out of order. I haven't done.
Let let the commissioner finish.
And so I'm looking at this and I'm hearing you, and I see elements of fraud. I'm that person, I'm the person to make any judgments, but I see elements of that because you got the money from the state, maybe there's fraud there, money from the county, maybe there's fraud there, money from the insurance company, maybe there's fraud, I don't know. But I'm I'm gonna make a motion to the county director and ask him to inform the insurance agency that we already received the money and the registry tech fund should know that you haven't even used the money for what you asked it for. It doesn't make any sense to me.
First of all, I'm.
Thank you.
You 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 like throwing things out, Peter? You want to talk about fraud? You know, what about some of the fraud? You might be committed. You get someone working in your law firm.
He's out of line.
And then their their spouse gets hired.
Wait a minute.
Eighteen thousand dollars. As out of line as this was, that tech fund.
What has that got to do with what we're talking about?
You can stop throwing fraud around. We're gonna start throwing fraud. I came over here.
You're out of line.
The the tech fund, the tech fund, the tech fund, the tech fund is accessed and it's been a project trying to get work done. We don't have a registry IT department and and we're doing the best we can, but it's still, you know, you can attack me for coming over here. That's what you do. Great, Peter, you're good at saying there's mismanagement. The mismanagement is over here, interjecting themselves at the registry. The tech fund has been used to modernize that registry and will be used. I would like to see when we could sit down and have a civil discussion.
You got two hundred and forty four thousand dollars in September twenty first, twenty twenty one to replace the microfilm and you haven't done it and you're here asking for a hundred and fifty something thousand dollars now. I think there's fraud somewhere in there because you're double dipping. You were already paid for this and you're trying to double dip.
You've got your numbers wrong. The insurance is an insurance claim. You know what? The other one that sat here, looked at Rich Kennedy, who's been here forty years and said, oh, we can't find money for him or the two union staff people. So that was on.
I'm not going to repeat myself.
That's not relevant.
The personnel issues, the past contract, whatever went on, has got nothing to do with the reason you're here today.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
And I never claimed the one fifty. I pointed out what the insurance companies.
Got all sorts of allegations, all sorts of statements by people who I know and I like, and it's getting out to point, we're getting off track here, Mr. Chairman. I thought the purpose of our agenda, truthfully, was to discuss and to analyze the registry of deeds vault fire and to establish a timeline and to ascertain from that, which I know you and I'm sure my colleague, Peter, and everybody except for you, you didn't get the shit, took time this morning or last night to read through. There's a lot of information in here, a lot of information, a lot of correspondence. There's a lot of emails, a lot of things. Like I said, when I opened my remarks, disappointing to see a huge delay.
It's a question of.
Big red flag. So and now I'm glad to hear we have new a new person or a new company. That's good, okay? That's good. That's a step in the right direction, okay? Maybe you should have been notified. I mean, if I've got a fire in my house and I put a claim in and the check comes in and my kid grabs the mail and doesn't tell me, I'd be a little upset. I want to know if that money's coming in. And I also, I can sympathize a little bit in what you're saying, a little bit. I don't, I want to dig into more of what Peter's saying. I don't understand totally that. But you had to put a claim in. I understand that. So there was a loss of paper and a loss of toner and all that became part of the claim. That claim was submitted, okay? As part of that claim, we got money. We did, the county got money. And now, as I think rightly so, that money gets deposited in the county treasury. I think that's where it belongs. But probably would have helped you a little bit because you're looking at it as your money, even though I look at it as our money, the county taxpayers' money. We we did, we disagree on that, but you would have liked to have known, okay, that that money.
It's the taxpayer's money.
Well, we agree on something, good. It's that that money is in the bank and you want to know how much of that can you go after? But to Peter, but we we would have been more appropriate.
Discussion on it. Not get attacked. I'd rather have a discussion on that.
I'll talk to the county. And talking reasonably, don't attack people. But let me finish. You should, I think what you could have done, should have done, and maybe we're learning from this, is put in a claim or request directly for reimbursement or like for your supplies or for your toner or things like that.
To who?
To, I guess, the county advisory board or to our office.
It has to come to you.
Yeah, it has to come to us.
To so in the in to county.
But again.
To use to the county, through the county director for reimbursement.
Peter said. To get reimbursed, okay? You didn't do that, did you? You put a claim in. Don't get mixed up here. You put the claim.
The county put the claim in. We have supplied information. It's a county, it's a county claim. I've never said it's a registry claim. The registry paid for a lot of the claim and as far as the the microfilm project is no different than the shelving. You you you've got to.
My point, Mr. Chairman, we put the claim in. I get that. We've established that. However, the registry lost paper and and they had to go out and buy supplies of paper, which makes sense. So he ran short in his budget, which means he would have been entitled to get money from somewhere. I don't know where. I'm not going to be an expert on that, but either from the deeds excise or from reimbursement or the appropriate way. So there's there's a middle ground here. I think this is a matter of communication, that's all. We don't need to allocate. But the other thing about this, that's a scary thing. I hope we're not going down that road. That's I don't know what's happening with that, but that could be, let's say, misinterpretation? I don't know.
I'm not I'm not making I'm not making any judgments. I'm just saying.
I'm not making any judgments. I just throw it out there.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. We are going, the the science has just been put together on the microfilm, the amount of, excuse me, the amount of images. We are going forward with that project. Are you then taking that? I mean, the director has just included it in his claim. Are you going to remove it from the claim now? We're not looking for dollar for dollar. We're going forward with the microfilm project. We have to go forward with these IT projects with or without their help. We're going forward. It this is the same funding source, it's the same principle at play with the deeds excise. We put it forward to pay for that shelving. We will pay for the microfilm. We're good. This has been, I can't even tell you how many hours I have put on this aspect, the microfilm aspect of this claim, hours and hours. We're going forward with it. What you do with that money? He was asking for the date of the check, wasn't check received. So is the director now, and Peter, are you going to remove that hundred and sixty thousand dollars from this claim? And that's fine if you do. We're going forward. We have to keep operations going. We have to move forward on these things. Are you taking it out of the claim? That's fine. That's your decision. You've just lost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Okay. Are we doing that?
I don't think we're doing anything until the whole thing is settled. I mean, no, we haven't done it.
All right, okay.
But.
But, okay.
If I'm hearing there's an August date, I I assume that whether it's good or bad is going to bring it to a head. Do we expect to receive more money? What did they give you any indication?
We we, as Margaret just indicated, the final elements of a microfilm piece were received in the last couple of days.
And they're looking at it?
They have, it has been submitted to the adjuster. So it's under, currently currently under review.
So what do you expect on August second or third, they'll finally say?
I have a scheduled call with the adjuster tomorrow, so I'll try to find out what their timeframe is, probably to submission.
And then they're going to say, take it? You got it? Or no more, no less, obviously.
Yeah, essentially.
Okay. All right. I don't think any more can be said today that will shed any more light. We have a lot to digest here. I never. Again, we've all got experience with insurance companies. I don't mean to make them the scapegoat here, but they're not. Any tragedy that happens anywhere in the county, obviously, we have insurance and obviously we have other monies that will have to be used to fix and do it. No, we don't want anything to stop. We don't want any service to anyone to stop, and I know it never did. And I just think we shouldn't be spending or allocating any insurance money until the claim is final. It's unfortunate it takes so long. And again, I I mentioned two thousand and fifteen claim, I think it was settled. I remember running around with a book about this fat, listening to all that happened in those storms in March of fifteen, and we were back and forth and it was all new to me. I guess we had similar questions at the at the time, but I I I'm not sure. But we fixed whatever had to be done at that time. And I don't think we were made whole, but you know, it took a long time to get the money and everyone was in chagrin, et cetera. Remember, the name of the company was Petroselli or something, and I remember we were given a big book. You couldn't possibly digest it if you were a PhD or something, but.
I I still have an issue. I have an issue with the money coming from the county registers technological fund at two hundred and forty four thousand when the bill is one fifty something. And I think people should be notified of that.
Um, Peter, that, excuse me, through you, Chair, that was an estimate put together within a month of the fire. This is an IT issue. I didn't have the help of an IT department after this fire. Did not. On this particular issue, it was our best estimate based on state contract pricing. And the quote we received is substantial savings rather than point zero six five on every two two million dollar image, two two hundred million images. He's charging us less. That's why the money is less. And you know, I I it is just unfair for you to throw that out. Sorry.
It's not only unfair, it's false. Making these false allegations, Peter. We're going to run the registry, whether you you know, we run it the best we can. This registry has a great reputation and you can throw as many challenges as you want at the registry, but we're still going to try to do do our job. And our job involved microfilm. And you know what? We we're trying to do the best we can. And this would be the equivalent, Commissioner Stady brought up a fire. You know, the the homeowner still has to build up the house. Maybe he he's using his own monies to do it. He's waiting for the insurance company. What you people do with the insurance company is what you do. But the fact that you couldn't even tell us that a check was received when you stood here with union people here and with temporary people here and said there's no monies available, whether they can be used or not, that thing should that should have been discussed. Because as you could see, there was deeds excise money, which you, again, refused to 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 let the registry spend, which is the registry.
Through you, up to the point of worry, is that fund that Commissioner Collins is talking about, though? That money that he read, I'm I'm taking it as fact, is that money for microfilm that you're putting in a claim in form?
Yeah, he put it, he put it in the county, two hundred and forty four thousand dollars, and he received the money.
There's a registry technological.
Two years ago.
That, right. And it's taken that. Yeah, there's a registry technological fund, which we we try to use to to modernize the registry and make claims. You you just don't get the money. There's a process. He mentions the letters, there was, there's a process to get those monies. And it still has taken this long to try to even get to a position to even.
You got the money on September twenty first, two thousand and twenty one.
You should be thankful, Peter. We're trying to run the registry. It may not fit your narrative because you don't know what goes on over at the registry, Peter. You have no idea about business operations.
Is this something that you and your staff do on a regular basis? To get the fire?
Well, we can't, yeah, we have used the technology, we've used the technology fund before for all kinds of modernization initiatives, computers and indexing, things like that, yes.
Okay, so it could be separate from, if it, this is something you do to modernize your building, your equipment.
Only coming over here, do you get attacked to have a discussion about a a claim? The county should be on the same page. It shouldn't be about personalities, Peter, and you like to make every meeting about personalities. Put in your claim.
Bill, you're getting way too.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm.
I just, I asked my question.
I didn't break up.
Are you answering my question?
Yeah.
All right, Director Cronin, go ahead.
Chairman, through you, based on the information that's been discussed and to your question about my meeting with the adjusters, um, I believe the information relative to the technology fund monies should be relevant to the insurance company's understanding of our ability to pay for this claim. So through you, if you're inclined, I would be happy to share that with the insurance company when I meet them tomorrow.
I think you should share everything with them, I mean, I, you know.
The images.
My answer is yes.
So whatever the insurance company gives you, yeah, damages and damages.
Okay, I'm, uh, I'm gonna rule that we're done with this matter for today. Uh, item number six. Take it under advisement, I appreciate everyone's attendance.
Thank you.
Relative to the fire claim, February twenty one, February twenty one, yes. Okay, we were on item number.
Thirteen.
I'm just, I'm, I'm, item number ten, we're item number thirteen.
I didn't see it, I just saw that.
Yeah, it's going through.
Bid opening at one thirty, we have no bid openings today.
Confusing. All right.
Number fourteen, we have no contract awards for today. Number fifteen, fiscal year twenty four county assessment sheet for your approval.
Yes. Um, do we need to vote each other?
No, you vote the whole thing.
You don't reach that time?
No, just the top.
It's just a.
You got it. So, Mr. Chairman, uh.
We're required to post it, yeah.
Do you want me to read that there?
Sure.
On on this date, uh, I've moved that we approve, um, uh, pursuant to an Norfolk County Advisory Board vote of their meeting, May seventeen, in compliance with chapter thirty five, section thirty of the Mass General Laws.
Section thirty one.
I'm sorry.
It's section thirty or thirty one.
Piece of paper. That's the vote, the.
Oh, yeah, down below.
Yeah, sorry, go further down, Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wherefore?
Right there.
Okay, thank you, you're right, you're right, you're right, you are right. So I'll move pursuant to that and based on the apportionment established by chapter thirty five, section thirty one, uh, that the county tax for Norfolk, the amount of seven million, one hundred and twenty six thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars be apportioned in accordance to the town and the schedule listed below, listing from Avon to Rantham, uh, as outlined in this base sheet, and that the commissioners also issue warrants certifying to the assesses of the cities of East Town in said county of Norfolk, the respective proportion there are to be assessed and collected according to the law and paid to the county treasurer. One half to be paid by November one, twenty twenty three, and one half to be paid by May one, twenty twenty four. That cover that? Okay.
Second, motion made in second to approve the Norfolk County assessment as permitted on this date. All in favor? Three to one, three to zero, thank you. Number sixteen.
I signed a couple someplace, this should be.
Fiscal year non-union engineering budget approval for an item. It's a non-union clothing allowance for a non-union member of six hundred and fifteen dollars, Director Cronin.
Uh, briefly, Commissioners, last week you approved several non-union benefits. Um, the, uh, there was one remaining. I alerted you that it would be coming in this week, just didn't meet the agenda timeframe for last week. So this item, I believe, fits in with the other items you saw last week. And if I recall correctly, the Commissioners agreed to include them for FY twenty four with the thought process towards revisiting this in FY twenty five as a continuing benefit. So this one is, uh, with the engineering department, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, real quick for you, Director Cronin, was that the backup that he provided about the boots and the need for that? That was explained at all?
Okay, he provided the written justification.
Okay, I have no problem. Do you have a vote approving it?
Yes.
Move approval of the, uh, for the non-union engineering budget for clothing allowance in the amount of six hundred and fifteen dollars for FY twenty four.
Second, okay. Motion made second, all in favor? It is a vote, thank you. Number seventeen, report of the county director.
Uh, I only have two items this week, Commissioner, just to alert the Commissioners in general. Uh, Shalavadinir, Human Resources Director, will be sending out letters to, um, department heads and non-union staff this week, uh, non-school staff as well, relative to their, uh, reporting times. What is their schedule that they are supposed to be working, um, and have them endorse it for their personal files? This is something that has not been done in the past. We want to make sure that everybody understands what their respective schedules are, when they're expected to be here. Um, and it'll be in writing in their personal files. Second of all, I'm completing the, uh, performance evaluations for FY twenty three of all my direct reports. Um, begun, but I'm probably only put two or three in, I'll finish them up over the next couple of weeks. During this conversation, we're reviewing and discussing the goals that the employees have for this fiscal year, simultaneously setting the goals for next fiscal year. Um, so the process that we started when we arrived here is ongoing. It's productive, it allows myself and employees to kind of engage in a private dialogue about how things are going. Uh, overall, it's a very, very productive process. Um, incidentally, Commissioner Stady, Commissioner Collins, um, I have spoken with Commissioner Stady, excuse me, Commissioner Shay, about having a similar performance evaluation done by the chair of me through the goals I set last year, and I'll replicate this process by setting new goals for FY twenty four through the chair in the coming week or so. Uh, that's all I have this week, people.
Any questions of the director?
Is it, uh, real quick?
Sure.
Just for, just to help me out, too. When you sit and you evaluate the personnel, do you use any kind of a rule break or?
Yes, we have a form, um, I pretty much copied it from the state. There are three goals, um, either, uh, not below, meets or exceeds the goals. Um, there are some descriptive, uh, elements of the goals, whether or not those goals can be measured, and and if so, what are the metrics? For example, if you promise to have a policy done, then we put the date in. Um, that's, that's always part of the dialogue, how are you doing against those, those benchmarks? And if there are any impediments that I can help them overcome, I I contribute to that as well. So it's, um, meetings are very productive, I enjoy them, I don't know if everybody else does, but it's it's important that staff know that, um, their goals are important to the organization and to them. I I want to make sure that they get the resources.
It's annual review and once a year.
It's actually, uh, three times a year technically. So we start now for planning FY twenty four. I'll meet with them at mid-year, usually in January, and then we wrap it up in June, July for the annual performance.
Excellent, okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All the information goes in the personal files.
Thank you. Number eighteen, emergency items topics the chair did not recently anticipate, I have none. I want to mention before we adjourn that, uh, I want to, uh, adjourn this meeting in memory of Lorraine K. Murphy, uh, who is the mother of Peter Murphy at Norfolk Agricultural School, who passed away at the age of ninety eight. I think it was last weekend in Avon. I know that Bill, Bill Buckley caught it and was in attendance, so, um, I want to remember and dedicate this memory, this meeting to Lorraine K. Murphy. Again, a mother of Phil Murphy, our maintenance supervisor at the school. She was ninety eight years old.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I may, as well, and I'm most solemn, as well, uh, trustee Ma Parish, uh, his father passed away. And the funeral was the other day, and John was there, I was able to make it back in the tent.
Yeah, I, I. We just did the mother, but I didn't.
I didn't realize the father passed.
No, I didn't either.
It was quick and was much, it was the.
Been a month of the mother, six weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, Mark is a big.
Our condolences, well.
Important part of our team at the school, so.
Yeah. Anyway.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?